So I called a select board meeting back into order. We are conducting, discussing, and considering applicant interviews for retail marijuana host community agreements. Our 11 o'clock appointment is Over the Bridge LLC, GBA Salty Farmers, One Born Bridge Approach, Bourne, Adult Use Marijuana Retail Establishment. So, welcome. Have a little bit of speech here. So you have about a half an hour for your presentation. And then we'll have about fifteen, between, somewhere between 15 and 30 minutes where the board will ask specific questions for, about your proposal. So, welcome. You can introduce yourselves now.
Thank you. My name is Harlan Howard. I'm an owner-operator of Salty Farmers, and I'm here to present for the group. With me is Jonah Turner and Hillary Salinow. And also, we have a couple of our engineers from VHB to discuss some traffic stuff that I'm not comfortable with. So I'll start with a little bit about us. Currently, we own and operate an adult-use retail store in Eastham. We've been in operation since August of 2021. We also have a cultivation facility under construction that we expect to be done by mid-2025. This will provide us the opportunity to create our own brand outside of retail. We have built and maintained good relationships with our local government, police department, Cannabis Control Commission vendors, and customers alike, which will help us in our continued success in navigating any issues that may arise in the future. Being raised here and now owning a business on the Cape, we fully understand the seasonality of Cape Cod in regards to sales, hiring, et cetera. We also plan on making the town of Bourne a second home if given the opportunity. We are a small company, and Jonah and I are boots-on-the-ground type of people. We can, we need to find a place to live here if we're going to work here, and we can't open and operate a store if we aren't here. We also have dogs, Franks and Beans and Miles, and they need places to hang out, too. So a little bit about our vision. We would like to become the Cape Cod brand, known for growing our premium locally grown cannabis and having a nice laid-back retail environment. We have a competitively priced menu that's reasonable for all consumers, and currently we even bake the sales tax into all our listed prices. Having local business ownership on Cape Cod is important for several reasons. Independent businesses contribute to the unique charm and character of Cape Cod. Local ownership often prioritizes more sustainable practices. Local business owners are more likely to invest in their communities. And small businesses often provide more personalized service that creates a better relationship with the customers. Supporting local businesses helps ensure that Cape Cod remains a vibrant, thriving, and local place for both residents and visitors. We also believe that this site's location provides us with a good opportunity to co-locate a medical dispensary within three years, because we plan to be completely vertically-integrated by that time. A little bit about the ownership. Again, my name is Harlan Howard. I have experience in a few different areas. I have a bachelor of science degree in accounting from University of Massachusetts. Prior to founding Salty Farmers, I was a staff accountant at Bowman &amp; Bowman CPA in Wellesley from 2010 to 2012. I then moved home to take care of my mother, and there were no accounting jobs, so I started Hostu LLC, a merchant service company, in operation since 2012, which is when I met David, Hillary's husband. David is a friend and also our investment partner at our Eastham location. As the chief financial officer of Salty Farmers, I'll oversee all finances, accounting, and administrative functions of the business. And a little bit about my passion for the business. When I was 22, I was diagnosed with a rare form of cancer. The only treatment for me at the time was to surgically remove the tumor, and after surgery, I was prescribed 1,200 painkillers. I thought to myself, I would not end up in a better place than I started, so I asked Jonah to help me get some marijuana to try that instead. I was pain-free, and I was able to sleep, and seeing the benefits firsthand has made me believe in the availability of it. A little about Jonah. He's in, also, in addition to being an owner-operator of Salty Farmers, he's the owner of FE Side Piece, a commercial lobster fishing vessel on the ocean side of the Cape. He has also had experience working in marijuana cultivation facilities. After high school, he had the opportunity to learn and exist in cultivating medical-grade cannabis in California. And after seeing the benefits of cannabis, he knew it was a path he was interested in going down. And as the COO of Salty Farmers, he oversees most of the day-to-day operations, including inventory control, staffing, and compliance. Jonah and myself run all day-to-day operations. Hillary is also an important part of the team. She helps us look for new opportunities. We forward her all legal documents such as leases, contracts, and she has her lawyers approve it, and she's the funding arm of Salty Farmers. Hillary is David's wife, mother of their three children, and with David back operating his company full-time again, she will be taking over David's responsibilities. She looks forward to becoming more involved as she enters a new phase of her life. A little bit about the community. A big part of our brand is to connect with the community around us. Many of our regulars are regulars because they find comfort and connection and validation from the staff. We are constantly striving to give people a relaxed and comfortable experience. Many of our shoppers come back because they felt the budtenders connected with them on a personal level and helped them get the products that suited them specifically. We are locals connecting with locals. We have also partnered with the Fisherman's Partnership out of New Bedford as part of our Positive Impact Plan. They provide financial counseling, medical and Narcan administration training, and health insurance enrollment for local New Bedford residents, as well as helping with the fishing community on the whole South Shore. Additionally, to our Positive Impact Plan requirements from the CCC, we believe it's important to give back to the communities we serve. Currently, we work with the People of Action, Barnstable-based charity. They provide scholarships and school supplies to local underprivileged students. They also have an emphasis on having the youth interact with local law enforcement so that in the future, they don't have negative interactions. And we look forward to contributing to the Town of Bourne and being a member here. We know that homeless for the holidays is important to the Town of Bourne, and we would like to become a sponsor to them in addition to our other Positive Impact goals. Equity and inclusion. We have set a goal of employing at a minimum 50% of our staff from diverse populations. These numbers are reported to the CCC on an annual basis during license renewal and are an essential piece of the renewal process. These numbers will also be reported to the Town of Bourne on an annual basis during license renewal. Salty Farmers will, and plans on holding a job fair onsite for all positions open at the new location prior to opening. And in the future, we'll hold job fairs as needed. We will give preference in hiring to local Bourne residents. Number of Bourne residents who are employed by Salty Farmers will be reported to the Town of Bourne on an annual basis during licensing renewal. We are also proud to say that we provide Blue Cross, Blue Shield, HMO, and PPO health insurance to all full-time employees that work and full-time being considered a minimum of 30 hours a week. We're also proud to say that after over three years of operating, we have maintained over 80% of our original staff, and we are committed to ensuring at a minimum 25% of our wholesale suppliers are majority-owned or managed by women, minorities, veterans, persons with disabilities, or LGBTQ persons. Employee training is a big part of making us be successful. Prior to performing any jobs, employees will be required to complete responsible vendor training, read and sign the Salty Farmers Employee Handbook, and agents that will be handling product will be required to complete metric training. Agents will see, will receive at least eight hours of ongoing training annually and be proficient in using our point-of-sale. We keep our agents up to date on the latest regulations and industry trends to ensure they receive ongoing professional training. All agents will be well-versed in their job responsibilities prior to performing them. A big part of moving forward in this process is the community outreach process prior to host community agreement. At least 14 days prior to the proposed meeting, the notice of the meeting must be published in the local newspaper or something of general circulation in the town, filed with the town or city clerk, the planning board, the contracting authority for the municipality, and the local licensing authority. And at least seven days prior to the proposed meeting, the notice of the meeting must be mailed to all butters of the proposed marijuana establishment within 300 feet of the property line. Potential locations to have our community outreach meeting could be Buzzards Bay Community Building, Jonathan Bourne Public Library, Vocastic Community Building, and Mezzaluna. Information to be presented at this meeting will be the location, type of establishment, how the proposed establishment is allowed under current zoning bylaws and ordinances, local required permitting, required state and local permits for operation, all local regulations regarding marijuana establishments, buffer zone security information, plan to prevent diversion to minors, quality control procedures, how the establishment will positively impact the community, and host community agreement details. A little bit about our proposed location. The address is One Bourne Bridge Connector. It meets all zoning requirements. The renderings that we are going to show you will show the potential of the space. The building is a blank canvas that allows us the freedom to design the space how we want. It is an open layout that will provide us for plenty of storage, office space, retail space, staff space, and room for expansion. The entry allows for a comfortable indoor waiting space if needed, but also leaves us with an inviting entryway instead of the shaded glass we are all used to at these establishments. As you can see on this next slide, we are located directly in the center of the proposed MOD, and we believe the site is perfect for this type of establishment. We are not close to any residential, and we are easily accessible. The site also meets all the buffer zone requirements. Per the MOD zoning bylaws 105 CMR 725 and 925 CMR 500, the site must be located at least 500 feet from the nearest school entrance, daycare, or area for congregating children, such as a playground measured in a straight line. The closest schools are over 400 feet away from the geometric center of the proposed building, and the closest playground is over 2,000 feet away. And now, I'm gonna, for a couple minutes, have our engineers come up and talk about the site and traffic.
Thank you, Harlan. My name is Peter Mara. I'm a senior project engineer with VHB. I've been working with Harlan to design, or conceptually design, the site improvements for the project. As you can see on the screen right now, this is a conceptual illustrative rendering of our proposed site. A majority of this current existing site is pavement with the existing building. We are proposing a new parking facility, approximately 20 spaces, including accessible and bicycle parking along the western side. We are also be proposing stormwater BNP's to treat and provide water quality for runoff, for runoff from the parking lot, the drive-ais, as well as the roof runoff, and we'll be designing that, those BNP's to meet all local and state guidelines. We'll also be providing an increase in landscaped area, so we can reduce the overall impervious nature of the site. As currently proposed under this concept, we're increasing the pervas area by about 4,000 square feet, and any zoning bylaws we'll be designing to comply with. The existing building is a little bit non-conforming in terms of the setbacks with the most recent overlay districts, including the downtown gateway district. But otherwise, we will be designing the rest of the site to meet all zoning bylaws, and we'll be making sure that our access to the surrounding sites are maintained along the eastern side, and we'd be proposing new access to the parking facilities for, by a 24-foot-wide drive aisle, and we'll also be having sidewalks connecting the parking lot, bike parking, to the main entries of the building. Next, I'll turn it over to Randy Hart to discuss traffic.
Well, good morning. Randy Hart, I'm a principal with VHB. We prepared a traffic impact and access study for this project to assess what the traffic impacts might be. Our study was done based on standard, you know, methodology, but one of the things we do is we estimate traffic that will be generated by the project. And do that, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is a standard approach, as you probably know. Within the land use codes, they have marijuana dispensary. The data that's actually provided in there is somewhat dated, and because it's dated, the number of dispensaries that were around when the data was collected, there weren't a lot. So the numbers using, you know, using those numbers today, knowing that dispensaries are much more common, is very conservative. But by applying those numbers, we're demonstrating that during the three critical periods that we typically look at for traffic, we look at the morning commuter hour period, and the evening commuter hour period on a weekday, and then the Saturday midday for the Cape. We expect about 29 trips during the morning peak hour, about 48 trips during the evening peak hour, and then about 62. And again, I think those numbers are actually overstated based on the data. We hope that the IT manual comes out with more updated numbers in the very near future, and we expect they will. You know, this is a commercial use today, and any reuse of it is likely to generate similar activity. Some uses would generate much more. The, while not shown on the plan, the Bourne access road is actually a right-in, right-out condition, so the project doesn't really require left turns. So that's, I think, something to think about. We also looked at site distance at the site driveways, just to ensure that adequate sightlines were available. Both the intersection, site intersection, and stopping site distance exceed the minimum requirement. So it seems a suitable location, given the safety and traffic operations that we anticipate. So, thank you.
Here you'll see an exterior rendering of our building. It will require lots of putty and paint and a new rubber roof, but overall, we think it will be a significant upgrade. Currently, it's a little bit rundown, but, you know, we plan on making a nice new entryway that looks a little bit more inviting, like I said. And here's a picture of our interior rendering. As you can see, the, it's a nice open layout on the sales floor. There's plenty of room for pop-ups, customers, staff, and the space creates a good flow. Here we have a layout of our building. This is a full interior layout. In the front, there's the entry room, which leads you back to the sales floor. Customers will enter and exit from separate doors. It helps prevent congestion at ID check. The sales counter will be the separating barrier for staff and customers. Behind the sales counter, you will see a sales floor closet. This is where product will be stored for fulfillment to the sales floor. This will be a vaulted space, and product will stay here overnight. Behind the sales counter, to the right, is the staff lounge. All staff will have access to the area. In abutting the lounge is the vault and office. The vault is the main storage space, and all sensitive documents will be stored in the office. At the entrance to the vault is the receiving area, and in the back-left of the building is the employee bathroom. So for sustainability in buildings, important to us. The building is a cinder block building. We do not plan on changing the footprint of the building, just doing renovations. Numerous elements of the project, proposed project located at One Bourne Bridge Approach are intended to promote sustainable design elements. Similarly, a focus was placed on energy efficiency in renovating the existing structure. The concrete block structure set on a concrete foundation with large-spanning roof trust framework provides the opportunity to create a more environmentally-conscious intervention with minimal structural changes. A little bit about security. A comprehensive security plan will be presented to and approved by the Bourne Police Department. The building will be a secure facility. The facility will be equipped with surveillance cameras, perimeter alarms, and electronic access controls. All cameras will record 24/7 and are backed up for 90 days minimum. Off-site central monitoring with dual pathway communications will be connected to our perimeter alarms, meaning there will be two forms, a cellular and a phone line, in case one goes down. We plan on preventing diversion in the following ways. Every person entering the facility will need to provide a government-issued ID proving they are 21 years of older, that will be scanned by door personnel upon entry and shown again upon checkout. All visitors will have to sign into a visitor log and wear a visitor's badge. Only authorized personnel will be allowed in limited access areas. All air entries to limited access areas will be equipped with electronic key card entries. Access to certain areas that are considered limited access areas will be determined by title and job responsibility. All products will be stored in secured vaults. All products are tracked and traced, received, and sold via metric. Deliveries will be received in the rear of the building and during normal business hours. All delivery vehicle, oh, sorry, I'm still there. All delivery vehicles will be unmarked, and their routes will be randomized. All delivery vehicle drivers will need to sign in upon delivery and receive a visitor's badge while the delivery is being intaked. Waste, all marijuana waste will be stored in a locked trash tow inside the building. This includes expired and returned products. Products for disposal are placed in a box and ground up with dirt at a 50/50 ratio until deemed unusable, bagged, and placed back in the waste tow. Quarantined products are stored in a separate airtight tow until they are shipped back to their wholesaler. In our experience, vendors do not want back expired or faulty products. They ask us to dispose of them and credit us on our next order. Secured trash is brought out during trash pickup once a week or as needed, when the trash company tells us they're there. A quick walk through a transaction. Customers will enter at the entryway. Exit doors will be marked as exit-only and will only open from the interior of the building as to not create confusion. A security person will check and scan their ID. If the ID is valid, the door person will scan their key fob and open the door to the sales floor. When you walk in, there will be a merchandise rack to browse while you wait. We will have six cash registers along the counter, one dedicated to to-go orders. Customers can approach the sales counter and will be greeted again by a budtender. Per CCC regulations, the budtenders will have to check their ID again. Then the budtender and customer will talk about what they're looking for, or the customer may just browse the menu on their own. Upon selection of the product, the budtender will pick them out, scan them, and take form of payment. Once payment is complete, the budtender will hand the customer their order and receipt, and the customer will exit from the exit door. We plan on being good neighbors. We will comply with all local zoning. Our hours of operation will be Monday to Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There will be no onsite consumption, and it will be strictly enforced. We have onsite parking, and we will give local hiring preferences to approximately 25 employees that we plan to hire. Some milestones. The first thing that is important is the community outreach meeting. Once that's complete, we can start to negotiate our host community agreement, and once that's done, we can go for site plan review and special permit. Once we have those permits in hand, we can apply for our provisional license with the Cannabis Control Commission while simultaneously working towards our building permit in Bourne. Once we have our building permit, we can send it to the state for architectural review, where they will either approve us to build or ask us to make more changes. Once we're done building, we go through inspection and we get our certificate of occupancy from the Town of Bourne, and then we can apply for final certificate of registration and commence our operations. That is our proposal. Thank you for your time and consideration. We'd love for you guys to come visit Eastham and give you a show around there, and I'll walk through the space at Bourne if you're interested in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure we're gonna have questions, so don't go away. We'll start with Melissa. Do you have questions?
I mean, it's a great presentation. I'm checking out your Facebook page, and, I mean, I think for me, we've, you know, we've gone through quite a few applications. We've, you know, seen all the proposals. They're all very well-done. I've been sort of asking a lot of questions for the consumer, because a lot of people have, you know, told me they'd like to know this, that, or the other. I think with the location up there, I think just, and it's really probably not something you can necessarily answer. I think my worry is that location up there. I know that building has, hasn't been used in quite some time. I think it was the Salvation Army building last time. Probably significant traffic for that. I just worry, because I know that coming down out of there, it's tricky sometimes, getting out onto that, you know, onto the rotary from that location. I think that would be, you know, and it's really probably, again, it's not something that you might be able to answer for me regarding traffic, because we can't, it can't be put a light there. So that was really, you know, my thought. It's just where it's located, it's, I go to PetSmart quite a bit, and, you know, sometimes you gotta really get on the gas to get out of there.
Oh, because you have to go across the road. I just have to scoot in the right lane.
So if you're going right, good. But if you're trying to get across to get into the bay, or, you know, anywhere heading toward Wareham, it can be pretty scary sometimes. So that was sort of my only thought about up there.
Can I, can I add on to that?
Sure.
Can you put the concept plan back up, please?
Can you use a pointer? There's a laser pointer thing?
Yeah.
So you can describe things a little bit? What was your question, Peter?
Oh, concept plan.
Oh.
Which is the outside, like site plan, right there?
Yep.
Behind that building, you see an abandoned building. That is the old Tommy Oil property. In Durham, the 25th expansion, they used to keep oil trucks out there at night, and what happened is, is a couple of times, people emptied. You know, kids were being, doing pranks, they dumped the truck. All of a sudden, you got 300 gallons of oil, whatever, going into the ground over there. That may trigger a 21E on that property, being right near it. So I'm just curious if you guys have even thought about that, because I don't want you to be putting all that money to a spot where you may get stuck with some mediation of the property in addition to that.
The guys at VHD did a pretty deep dive into everything and every permit they thought we might need there. They didn't seem to think that that was something that was gonna come up. But to that note, this building is gonna be secure. There's gonna be cameras and lights around it, and, you know, in Eastham, we prevent bad things from hap, like, we have so much light and cameras that people don't want to do bad things around us. There's been multiple times where the police have come and asked us for our outdoor footage for other things that are going on, nothing to do with us, so.
And on your marketing plan, that is a dead-end street, and, you know, it's bad enough that it's hard to see, it's gonna be hard to see the building where it is, because it's with the vegetation all in. So you're gonna have to put a sign, a visibility sign, out somewhere on the rotary itself, so to get traffic in there.
There is a little stacked sign at the entrance, where I believe we're allowed to put signage on the rotary.
And again, and again, as we say, you know, that's a challenge, getting back onto the road. You take your life into your own hands trying to get in there after you leave, you know, Starbucks or Petco or anything already, so, I mean, I commend you for your presentation and your great store down Cape already, you know, so that goes without saying, but I just think the site's gonna be a challenging location.
I mean, I hope not. Our traffic, I seem to think, will be reasonable. There's a lot going there, on there already, so. There's a lot going there, on there already, so.
Just on the, on the site? I think I read someplace, some VHB said something about septic system. This is on the sewer. This, this site, isn't, I'm pretty sure the site's on the sewer system.
There is an existing septic system onsite, proposing to make improvements to the septic system. I'm proposing.
How long has it been vacant?
We know there's water connections to the street. I didn't think the sewer expansion went.
More than two years.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So I'm, just put that on your radar, because I know Starbucks and all those are on the, are on the, are on the sewer system.
On the other side of the street, I don't think the sewer goes up for a bridge.
Is this all the way at the end? I wasn't sure where one was.
It's the first building on the left.
First one, first building on the left.
Yeah.
So maybe that left-hand side isn't. I don't know. I don't know.
Honestly, I, I know.
We researched and looked into, I don't believe the sewer goes, you are correct, Starbucks and some of the neighbor corporations.
All, all those are on, 'cause the Jersey mikes, the dominoes, all that's on the sewer system.
Yeah, that's Main Street, one to go off.
And the veterinaries on the sewer system, too.
Yes.
Cat card veterinaries on the sewer system, too. Yep.
We can take a look at nothing other than.
Well, I mean, it's just for, put in the back of your mind, like, if you're going forward. Yeah, Marie?
You mentioned a little bit about the required training by the CCC for your employees. Do you do any additional in-house training?
We, we bring vendors in, and they do what's called bartender trainings, so they'll take, they'll come in for an hour at a time, and they'll, you know, teach about their products. We also, the local police department, they do, like, evacuation training, so we do stuff like that. And then every year, we have to do RBT training every single year. This year, we did TIPS certification as an additional one, you know, just not over-serving people if people come in and they're under the influence already, stuff like that. But there is ongoing training, and it's not all just about learning about pot.
Okay, right. And the other thing, who, who exactly is going to be involved in the day-to-day operations of your?
Both of us. I, I mean, we technically have different titles, but both of us almost do a lot of the same jobs. We overlap. You know, back in Eastham, we have a great staff. They're trustworthy, so we're comfortable leaving them and leaving them in charge, where one of us can be up here at all times, or vice versa.
Back to the site. I just had questions. The parking, so you've got eleven required retail, twenty proposed. What are the total spaces you're gonna have?
It's twenty spaces total, including one handicap.
Okay. And then where is employee parking?
Employee parking, we don't anticipate using all twenty spots at all times. I mean, we've been in operation for a long time. It's not as crazy-busy like people used to make it out to be. I don't anticipate having more than, you know, six or seven people on at a time. They would be in the back of the parking lot, so they would, I would, they would take six or seven of those spots.
Okay, and the arrows that are showing flow around the building?
That's just an access road, because it's, what's the word I'm looking for?
This is a driveway to provide loading to the back, so the way that we're assuming this site to work is that the arrows show the flow traffic, either one-way traffic on the east side of the building for deliveries to access the loading or the car which in the rear of the building on the north side, and the main drive aisle on the left-hand side with the flow arrows moving in both directions. Those spaces, that driveway will be used for high load as the end of customer terms, absolutely provide to a traffic that way. There, on the east side, that drive aisle will also be used to provide access to the going to the north, because it is sort of a shared driveway for both sides.
Okay.
There are some yellow arrows on that. I'm actually the yellow arrow.
Yeah, the double.
It's like a low knockout back there, too, correct?
There is.
This driving is more conceptual, I don't foresee us actually putting down a power strike. There's a lot of using full signs, and we cannot actually.
I guess that was it for now. And Marie touched on the training. I guess that was the other question I had, 'cause you mentioned Anthony in your.
Anthony Bartucca. He's our responsible vendor training person.
Just wondering who that was, okay. Thank you.
And are they certified by the state?
Yes.
Yeah.
They, they have a list that you can choose from.
Oh, okay.
What do you do to help combat mental health in marijuana or cannabis abuse problems? Because other, you know, liquid alcohol, you have, you know, there's this word that people can go to, drug abuse, there are people, but because you're selling a product that may be addictive and has an addictive quality, what are you gonna do to help combat that?
I mean, we provide informative pamphlets to everybody that are at every register about, you know, the possible of addiction and the, all the different side effects in marijuana. I, I think it's a case-by-case, you know, every customer's different. We've had instances where we've had to stop selling to certain people, 'cause we just, it's not in their best interest.
So you have refused people if you think they've had too much?
Not too much, just we personally know them, and we know they have mental health issues, and they shouldn't be consuming marijuana.
Thank you.
So I have a question about cultivation, 'cause you mentioned that you're working on a cultivation facility, which was going to, in the future, give you the ability to have integrated medical, and that you might be interested in doing that. But can you talk about where your product comes from now, and where you're doing, where you're planning on doing the cultivation?
The cultivation site is also in Eastham. It's located directly behind our retail store. Currently, right now, there are, I don't know how, hundreds of vendors in the state. You know, we've spent three years building our relationships, and we, all the marijuana come, all the products come from within the state. They're all heavily tested. Everybody has to be licensed, and, and that's where we're getting it now.
So you're not, you're, you've only started the cultivation in Eastham, or you use, are you actually?
It's under construction currently.
Okay.
Spring of twenty twenty-five is your projected, right?
Sometime, mid, we'd be very happy with spring.
Construction is a little bit slower. And I got the entrance exit, you'd said, that's, the exit is only, only open from the interior, there's.
There's no handle, yeah.
Do we have the percentage of ownership? How does your, we have, you had a, you have your initial filing in here, then you had like a little change where Hillary took David's chair, so whatever, or position. So what's the split in terms of Harland, Jonah, and Hillary?
Jonah, our, Jonah and myself are each thirty-five percent owners. Hillary is a thirty percent owner.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa, do you have any more questions?
Well, I think.
What was your projected timeline again for the process from here to, in the event you receive an HCA?
Generally, it takes about twelve to eighteen months to get through the whole process.
Even, including the construction and the?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, probably a little longer right now. The CCC is kind of going through a little turmoil, so stuff's been a little backed up there, but hopefully, by the time we get there, it's straightened out.
I think I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm looking at your screening plan right there. Are those low, low junipers that would be coming up? Because if you look at a ladder truck, and you're trying to get on it to fight, you know, the building itself, it, those trees, and they're getting too high, now you're hindering a ladder truck from trying to get over the building to, in case of a fire or whatever. I just wanna make sure that the, that this building can.
I don't know what type of plantings those are, but this is just a conceptual.
That's something from planting board.
We will be making sure that any trees that we do propose are locally native species, and if they work with the locals, provide access.
This is a special permit area, too, right?
Yep.
This is a special, yeah, so this is special permit. It's not site plan, like the General MacArthur Boulevard ones are.
Yeah, that's just site plan review.
But this is special, special permit.
And the signs also fall within the design review?
Design review committee.
Yep.
As well, so.
Yeah, there'll be more controls through the planning board because of where that is.
Yeah.
I mean, Jean, I've spent sixteen years on the planning board before fourteen years over here on the select board, and Jean's been on the planning board before that, as well, so there's two people here that have various experience from the permitting side of it.
Yeah, re- re- anticipate several, several specific courts on special permit, compliance with special board of call, as well as, you know, some technical considerations.
I have a design review committee with the downtown standards as well. It's another layer with, especially with the sites and that location.
Do you have any else?
I'm good.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
All set, Melissa?
Yep.
Anne-Marie?
I'm good.
So I just wanna make one comment about your history. I thought that was very interesting, that your personal experience with cancer and the medical benefits is, so.
Thank you.
It's good. Okay, I think we're all set. So this, our process is, the board is, has, and we have one more interview that we're gonna be doing this afternoon, and then after the interviews, we're, we have an agenda item today to determine our next steps, and to talk about how we're gonna complete the ratings, and administration will be, excuse me, contacting each of the applicants when the board has decided who we will be talking with about HCA agreements, so. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your, your time and your proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion to recess?
Yes.
Second.
Motion to recess by Peter, second by Anne-Marie. Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Eleven thirty-seven.